Good evening. I called order this October 3rd meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and asked the city secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Light?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Betsy?
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Councilmember Adams?
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. And would you please join me and the city council and me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance, please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our sergeant-at-arms tonight is Lieutenant Mike Cardwell. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. Well, councilmembers, before we do the first resolution on the agenda, we have a video, Mr. Norby, I believe is going to explain a little bit about that resolution. So, Mr. Norby?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
Every year, the American Planning Association sponsors what's called National Community Planning Month. And while we don't celebrate that every year here, about every five years we do, we thought it was about time to do that again. And so, they have put together a video that explains the value of planning. So, I thought I'd play that first. But before I get to that, I wanted to, we have our city county planning board, or most of our planning board members here, and I just want to introduce them for you first. First, our chairman, Arnold King, our vice chairman, Alan Younger, and Melinda Donegan, Tommy Hicks, Dara Little, Paul Mulligan, and Brenda Smith are here with us this evening. So, let me see if I can get this to play.
What does good planning bring to business? Real revenue. With vibrant neighborhoods, pedestrian-friendly avenues, and good public transportation, people in a well-planned community come together in ways that support the local economy. That means that stores, restaurants, and services in the area thrive. Good planning brings value to everyone in the community. Learn more at planning.org. That's planning.org. A message from the American Planning Association.
Very good. Thank you. Now, may we have the first resolution?
Resolution recognizing October as Community Planning Month, whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for our residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of our city council planning board and other citizens and planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. And whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by our professional planning staff and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Winston-Salem do hereby recognize the month of October 2016 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the city of Winston-Salem in conjunction with celebration of National Community Planning Month.
Is there a motion?
No motion.
Motion second. Any discussion? On further motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That is unanimous. I'd like to ask our chairman, Mr. Arnold King, to come forward, and I'll present this on behalf of the city council. I know each member of the council could present this because you work with each one of us to make things better in our communities. So, on behalf of the council...
Mr. King, thank you, and thanks to all the members of the planning board for all you do to make our community a quality place to live and work. And as Mr. Taylor says, relax. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of the planning board, let me thank you for the resolution and for your continued support. It's nice to know that you appreciate what we do, and just want you to know how much we appreciate what you do. So, it's been a pleasure to serve on this board. You have before you our annual report. I'm not going to go into it. If you have a chance to look through it and have any questions, I'm sure Paul and staff can help you with that. One item of interest, I think, that many of us, the Urban Food Access Report, which will be coming to you soon, that we've been working on. And also, you know, we've got about four area plans that we've completed, got underway, and several of your wards. And so, we look forward to continuing that process. So, again, on behalf of the planning board, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say to all of you how much we appreciate you and all of you I appreciate. Now, so my friend Brenda, you weren't here when I went in. It's so nice seeing you. We used to have lunch, and we worked in the same building when we were in Mooresville, North Carolina.
Good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Beth?
I just wanted to add my personal thanks. I know that you work hard. We appreciate your time and thought. We take your work product very seriously. It is important to our community to have sound planning going on. Thank you to the members of the board and to the planning staff. We very much appreciate you.
Good. Councilmember Adams?
Yes. Again, thank you, but I'm looking forward to hearing about your food access report, and maybe we can all get on the same page, okay?
Councilwoman Taylor?
I just want to add my thanks and congratulations for the hard work and dedication. I almost feel like I'm looking at a bunch of celebrities because I read your reports more than you actually know. And I see you on a regular basis, but it's good to put faces with names sometimes. So, thanks for being here, and we appreciate all you do for our citizens.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Have the next item, please.
Proclamation declaring October 3rd through the 7th, 2016, Customer Service Week, City Stores Presentation.
Proclamation.
City of Winston-Salem proclamation, Office of the Mayor. Whereas, in 1992, the U.S. Congress proclaimed Customer Service Week a nationally recognized event celebrated annually during the first full week of October. And whereas, this annual event is to raise awareness about customer service and the vital role it plays in successful business practices and the growth of the economy. And whereas, City of Winston-Salem employees utilize 10 keys to customer service excellence to provide and maintain exemplary customer skills and teamwork throughout our city. And whereas, city employees are one team committed to excellence. And whereas, the city of Winston-Salem greatly appreciates the opportunity to meet the needs of its customers and values the trust that is placed in our local government. Now, therefore, I, Alan Jones, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim October 3rd through the 7th, 2016, as Customer Service Week in Winston-Salem, and encourage all citizens to recognize, appreciate, and celebrate those who serve and support customers on a daily basis. Given under my hand and seal this third day of October 2016, Alan joins mayor.
Thank you. We have with us tonight, of course, Fernanda Devane, who heads up our City Stars and Employee Excellence Program. And I'll recognize her and present to her the proclamations.
Again, on behalf of our entire city council, you make us all look good by the hard work that you all do, and we're glad to recognize Customer Service Week. And I'd just say thank you very much.
This proclamation this week really means a lot. This week marks my 20-year work anniversary with the city. So, providing good customer service never gets old for me. So, I'm very proud to head up this initiative. We have exciting events for our employees this week. We started off today with a cornhole tournament and a food drive that we are sponsoring. So, we invite any of you, if you'd like, to come to the community assistance office and feed our Cookie Monster box that is for our food drive. We also have a basketball tournament, a walking tour, and an art display that we're displaying the talents of some of our city employees that is in Bryce Stewart Lobby. So, if you're there, take a look at some of the good things that they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do the City Stars presentation?
Yes, yes. I will start with Ms. Christina Freeland. If you'll come forward. Christina is our quarterly winner for consistent for the second quarter. I'll read you some of the things that were said about Christina in her nominations. Retiree Steve Covington was very impressed by her work ethic, stating that she came in on her day off to make sure that his time-sensitive retirement documents were signed. He said this is a clear example of an employee who goes the extra mile to serve her customers. Retiree Tom Searan said that she is responsive. He enjoyed her pleasant personality and always made him feel important when she was helping him. She responds quickly, and he was very, very impressed with this as he was retiring from the city. HR Director Carmen Carruth says that she receives these types of comments regarding Christina's performance frequently. She is very knowledgeable and committed to accurately processing retirement applications. I know that I've personally had to call her when I was out on FMLA. I was directed to her, and her answers for me were very accurate and very, very friendly. So, I would like to present to you again, Ms. Christina Freeland. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Thanks. I don't really have much to say, but I thank the retirees and Carmen for your, their kind words, and hopefully I'll continue to provide a good service for the city.
Thank you very much.
We do have another winner who's not here, but I know it's someone that you are all
familiar with, and that is Michelle McCullough in planning. I'll read a few things that were said about Michelle. She won for consistency in our first quarter, and it was stated that Michelle always demonstrates excellent customer service through our multiple keys of service excellence. I read that consistently that she was, she demonstrates ownership and accountability. Every year, Michelle, during Historic Preservation Month, works tirelessly with multiple groups within the community to ensure a good month of education, celebration, and promotion of historic preservation in the county. Words that also describe Michelle was that she's a collaborator, and that she partners and develops relationships with internal and external customers. She is also one who likes to create win-win situations and has a great problem-solving attitude. Her director, Paul Norby, says that he agrees that Michelle continually gives 110 percent to her work in our community. So, although she's not here, she's probably out doing some work, I would like to formally recognize her.
I'd like you to come up and shake hands with the city councilwoman myself. Thank you very much for what you do for our community and our city. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of the following items. We have two rezoning petitions, one UDO text amendment, and economic development item. All of the items are listed for public hearings, and when the public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If there is opposition to the rezoning petitions, proponents and opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, the public hearings will be closed, and the city council will consider the item. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, members of the public can always get copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, online at the city's website, www.cityofws.org. Just simply click on the watch meetings online option. May I have item number one, please?
Item one, public hearing on special use permit request of Bethel United Methodist Church for the expansion of institutional parking in a residential zoning district properly located on the west side of Bethel Methodist Church Lane, south of Burkmill Road. Planning Board certifies the site plans meets all Unified Development Ordinance requirements.
As you know, there has been a request to withdraw this item, and I'd recognize Councilmember Light, if she'd like to make a motion to allow the withdrawal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will move for approval of the petitioner's request to withdraw W. 3301.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? On further motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Light. Item number two?
Item two, public hearing on zoning petition of St. Andrews Presbyterian Church from RS9 to IP property located on north side of Old Hollow Road between Canory Street and Phillips Circle, recommended by Planning Board.
This is a public hearing. Yes, sir. Anyone in council chamber wishes to be heard on this proposed rezoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. I'd recognize Councilwoman Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I have not heard any complaints, and I have any communication with the people involved. If there are no questions from the council people, I'd like to move on with the motion.
Please.
Second.
Let me read.
Let her read.
I'm ready.
You know you've got a second.
You can say second like that one time, but now you have to read all this. Our attorney tells us we have to put in here. I move for, one, adoption of the statement of consistency as set forth on page 43 of the agenda book, and, two, approval of W. 3304. Ready. Second.
All right. Motion second. Any discussion? If not, on further motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Item number three?
Item three, public hearing on ordinance amending Chapter B of the Unified Development Ordinance to require the amortization of non-conforming adult establishments in the CB zoning district, UDO 272, recommended by Planning Board.
Mr. Norby, you want to give us a brief summary of what this proposed UDO amendment will do?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adult establishments, I'm sure as you know, are a protected form of freedom of speech as per the U.S. Constitution. And local governments, however, may regulate the time, place, and manner in which those uses can occur. The North Carolina general statutes also speak to adult establishments, and they state that sexually-oriented businesses can cause adverse secondary impacts, such as increases in crime rates and decreases in property values on neighboring properties. Adult establishments currently are allowed in our general business and general industrial zoning districts provided certain spacing requirements from different uses, such as churches, schools, daycares, things like that, are met. In 2003, the UDO allowed adult establishments in other zoning districts as well. And specifically, the UDO was amended in 2003 to make a number of use changes in the central business zoning district. That was part of a larger text amendment that actually deleted 12 different uses from the downtown zoning district and made further restrictions in three or four other types of uses beyond what had existed before. But among those was the prohibition of new adult establishments. Existing establishments within the CB zoning district therefore became legal non-conforming uses, just like the other uses that had, that had been taken out of the table of permitted uses for CB. The character of downtown, as you know, since then has changed dramatically in the past decade with increased residential and retail uses, as well as tourism. This proposal is in response to a recent increase in illegal activity occurring in or around the single adult establishment that is left in the CB zoning district located at 515 North Cherry Street. The city attorney's office has received complaints from residents in the vicinity of the non-conforming adult establishment about noise, illegal activity, and other breaches of the peace. And due to adverse secondary impacts, said non-conforming adult establishment is no longer compatible with the character of the CB zoning district. This proposal would establish an amortization period whereby this existing establishment would cease to operate by December 31st of 2019. The city attorney's office believes that the three-plus-year amortization period is sufficient to allow an owner to recoup his or her prior investment. This went on September 8th to the planning board for a public hearing. The downtown partnership spoke in support of the proposed text amendment. There was no one who spoke in opposition, and the planning board recommended approval of this text amendment to you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Norby on this proposed, Councilwoman Burke?
Yeah, I was going to ask about how many of these businesses we have in that particular area other than this one?
This is the only one in the downtown area. Elsewhere in the city, I think we have about seven that are left.
Do you have the locations?
There's a map that I have that shows the location. They're scattered around. We have three on Peters Creek Parkway. We have one that is, I believe, up on near Patterson Avenue. And, let's see, another one way far north, up near, up near Rural Hall, but in the city. Those are the only ones I see that are actually, and the one downtown.
I would just say, once we vote this in the other areas, I would hope if people have some concerns, we give the same kind of consideration.
Good point. Councilwoman McIntosh?
I have a question about how the amortization period is decided upon. Can you just give us a briefing on how that process works and how that number's arrived at?
Ms. Carmen?
I'll be happy to address that question. We actually looked at the amortization period used by other municipalities. Charlotte in particular had initially an eight-year amortization period. After a lawsuit and the conclusion of that lawsuit, it basically took 15 years to enforce that particular amortization statute or ordinance. The city of Greensboro had initially a five-year amortization period. After Judge entered an injunction against that, the city of Greensboro basically decide to, decided to drop its five-year amortization period. So, we looked at other municipalities. We also looked at the particular establishment in terms of investment and in terms of some other things that had occurred there, and thought that based upon the case law in other municipalities decided the three-plus years was reasonable.
Some of the theory is that if somebody has made a large capital investment, you have to allow them, you want to give them time to recoup that.
That's correct. You want to give them time to recoup that investment and to prepare for the economic shock of having to actually relocate that business.
And so, a three-year amortization period is basically telling me that there was not a lot of capital investment in this building?
There was some, and there's also been some losses due to some other activity.
And the owner owns the building, so that when he vacates, he'll be able to sell that building. And because the neighborhood is better than when he came in, he'll probably make a profit on that as well, I would think. That's...
Perhaps. I mean, he could technically just cease that business and use the building for another use.
Yeah, right.
And, of course, he could sell it.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Mr. Norby, can you go back two slides, I believe?
Yes.
Right here, this is. Can you explain to me the specific adverse secondary impacts that this property has to our community?
Well, I can start. Perhaps the city attorney can, can add into that. But the, because of that first bullet, the complaints about noise, illegal activity, and other breaches of the peace, there are, there is residential development as well as hotels and other tourist-related activities. So, residential, commercial, meeting space, hotels, all within a very close proximity to that use. And while we certainly have the convention center and the hotels there way back in 2003, the residential and some of the new retail are the, are the new uses that are in there. And so, those, those incidents that involve crime and loud noise late at night are, are things that, that are disruptive to being able to have viable residential use there. So, since the ordinance basically was saying both these uses, adult entertainment, are not allowed in the CB zoning district, but it was encouraging the other uses, it was producing a conflict between those land uses.
And I'll be happy to add to that, if you would allow me.
Well, and in particular, the, the secondary impact, particularly to residential uses in the instance that the business itself existed prior to residential use. And thus, does that not give that, that business any, any standing in the sense that it existed prior to residential development coming in to be neighbors?
I'll be happy to answer that question. I think based upon the statute that was quoted earlier, 168-181.1, I think the General Assembly has long recognized, even with an establishment pre-existing, the residential uses, that those uses, the adult establishment and residential uses generally will become at some point incompatible. Yes, that business was there first, but it's clear that with the increase in residential uses, the two cannot exist. And in terms of, I guess, the support for this particular request, I would note that prior to the filing of the nuisance abatement lawsuit, my staff and I looked at the number of calls for service at that particular location going back to January 2010, and the number of calls for service relating to fights, assaults, and other breaches of the peace were pretty significant. And you may recall, back in October of last year, there were a number of citizens that spoke during the public comment period about the level of noise emanating from that establishment. I think there are a number of indications that the two uses, the residential use, cannot coexist with the adult establishment use. And I think the General Assembly recognized that back in 1990 when it adopted the legislation.
Councilwoman Adams?
Just a question. Councilwoman McIntosh and I, we don't know which ward this is in. I was under the impression it was in the north ward. What ward is it in? Is it in the northwest, or is it in the north?
I believe the dividing line is Trade Street. So, since it is west of Trade Street, it'd be in the north ward.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Beth?
That's what I thought.
Some, some additional clarifying questions of Ms. Carmen, please.
Yes.
About the cases in Charlotte and Greensboro, were they state or federal court, and what level of review did they reach?
The cases, I may have to get Mr. Contos to help refresh my memory. I think they were both in federal court, and they went to district court.
District court, so they were not taken up for appellate review? They're not...
I don't think they were.
Okay. That may limit their, their direct relevance, but did you, or does Mr. Contos have a sense of what the failing was found to be? Did they fail to establish the community impacts, or did they fail to take into account reasonably the alleged investment value?
With respect to the Greensboro case, I'll start out, and maybe Mr. Contos can add to the information I provide. But in the Greensboro situation, it's my understanding that basically there was not enough effort put forth to show there were alternative locations. I think they had a number of businesses downtown, a number of adult establishments. And part of the law says that essentially, if you're going to amortize a use, you have to make sure that there are alternative places for that use to locate. And it's my understanding in Greensboro, they did not have basically sufficient alternative zoning districts in which that use could relocate.
And we've got two here that are fairly common.
They are fairly common, and you have to keep in mind, with respect to the city of Winston-Salem, we also have a spacing requirement. You have to be 1,000 feet away from other adult establishments. You have to be, uh, a thousand feet away from other adult establishments, public and private schools, daycare centers, and residential uses. So you have to take all those factors into consideration, and we did find alternative locations for this particular business. Uh, with respect to the, um, Charlotte situation, I think it was a question of whether or not there was sufficient evidence to indicate that there were secondary impacts. And, um, as you know, do have a, a request that this matter be continued, but I think with the additional information I plan on providing in addition to what was said tonight, I think there is a sufficient basis to establish that, um, there are secondary impacts and that the three-plus-year amortization period is reasonable.
That responds to my questions, but if Mr. Cantos has anything in particular to add based on research?
Anything else, Mr. Cantos?
The only thing I would add is, in case there is uncertainty in the, the Charlotte case, uh, Charlotte did end up prevailing in that litigation and just took extra time. And the court ruled that, given 168-181.1, um, and that language in there, Charlotte did not need to, though it would be a good idea, did not need to specify for each of those locations specifically what secondary impacts resulted on a case-by-case basis. Rather, they made a, a general statement about the secondary impacts of adult establishments in Charlotte in general.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beth. All right, this is a, okay, go ahead, Mr. Norby.
I need to correct myself.
Sure, all right.
A couple of minutes ago, I said it was in the north ward. I just checked the map, and in looking at it, appears that it is in the east ward.
Oh, my. East ward. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Norby. This is a public hearing here, so anyone in council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed UDO text amendment. All right, seeing no one, we're going to keep this public hearing open until next meeting. Uh, the city attorney has advised that we hold off voting on this until we have some additional, um, briefing by her, and so without objection, we will, uh, continue this to October 17th. Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. It, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I was surprised that you came up with a three-year amortization. Uh, I just can't believe there's any investment that you could recover your money in three years, and I don't know how long ago they made it, but I, I would certainly suggest we be sure all our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, and if a year or two more will prevent us from being tied up in court forever, that's fine, but if you think three is okay, I'll go with you, but, uh-
May I respond?
Yes.
I am comfortable with the three-plus-year, um, amortization period. Keep in mind that they have basically had since 2003 to kind of recoup their investment, and the more recent investment was not that significant to suggest that a longer period is warranted.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Montgomery have a objection to? Okay. So without objection, we will hold this. A public hearing will be open, and we'll consider this on October 17th. Item number four.
Item four, public hearing and resolution approving financial assistance to Corning Optical Communications LLC.
May I start? Assistant City Manager, Mr. Page, to give us just a brief, uh, comment about this, uh, proposed economic development project.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This item is a request for financial assistance from Corning Optical Communications for $435,300 over a five-year period. The assistance would equal 65% of the net new taxes generated by the project over that five-year period. The company proposes to invest $30 million and create 100 new jobs, which, with a average salary of $58,000 plus benefits over that five-year period. The company is committed to and aware of the city's commitment to both a diverse, uh, workforce as well as a local workforce. Currently, 47% of their employees are city Winston-Salem residents. If you look at Winston-Salem, Amherst County residents, that's 64% of their residents are local, as well as 47% of their employees are minority. Uh, the company is currently in Winston-Salem and looking to expand the existing operations here in Winston-Salem. The project does pay for itself. However, if the company fails to either meet the investment numbers or the job creation numbers with salaries, there would be a reduction in the annual incentive payment to reflect that pro rata reduction of what they failed to meet during that period. Have representatives here from, um, the Chamber of Commerce as well as the company have any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Page? Thank you, Mr. Page. Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I think I asked staff to, and it may be that when you put it in the, the packet, the $58,000, does it include, is that strictly gross salary to employees?
That is the gross salary.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Signed up, Jill Atherton, please. Give your name and address for the record, please, Mr.-
Jill Atherton, 411 West Fourth Street, Winston-Salem. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Winston-Salem Chamber in support of Corning's request for support. Uh, these are great jobs for our community, and, uh, Corning is committed to working, uh, to hire as many folks locally as possible, and we are looking forward to the possibility of working with them, and we certainly appreciate your, um, consideration of this request. And as, uh, Doric mentioned, there are representatives here from the company if you should have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
The company people need to answer these questions.
Okay. Is there someone from the company we could have a? If you would state your name and address for the record as well, please.
Ken Enman, 7430 Shadow Ridge Drive, Lewisville, North Carolina.
Charles McManus, 1857 Buckton Way, Burlington, North Carolina.
Okay. Councilmember Burke?
Yes, members of the council, probably for you two gentlemen, I'm the only one sitting here who believed in incentives, because I do know that in order for businesses to grow in a city to be competitive, we must have, we must give incentives. But I, I do have a concern. Would you just go a little bit into the 30 million that's going to be spent for new jobs, and then also tell me a little bit about the 47% of your workforce in minority? I introduced MWB for this city too, when it wasn't popular for us to do things like this.
Yes, ma'am. I'll start with the, uh, $30 million. Uh, so our business is growing quite significantly, and that money will be spent on new equipment, potentially additional footprint, but primarily, as we sit right now, there's still a lot of part, moving parts and pieces. There will be new equipment to, uh, support our growth.
I wasn't quite understanding some. You say new equipment. Tell us about the new equipment. Maybe the public may not understand new equipment.
So we manufacture optical cable. We'll take optical fiber, and then we, uh, strand it and jacket it into cables that have up to 400 fibers in it. And then that's utilized throughout industry in telecommunications, uh, buildings, stadiums, uh, wiring up, uh, wireless cell phone tower, towers. So it's utilized a lot throughout, uh, as the bandwidth, the need for information, uh, grows. And so it's basically a cable with optical fiber in it.
Do you buy that material from somebody to build it?
The fiber comes from mostly, and I'd say a vast majority comes to, from the Corning plants. One is located in Wilmington, North Carolina, and the other one is located in, uh, Cabarrus County, North Carolina.
Okay. Now, he's going. You had a comment as well?
Your second comment about the, the diversity within our workforce. So, um, we do have right now about 38% African-American within, um, our current workforce, and then additionally, um, we do have another nine or 10% that we consider other within our workforce. So we pride ourselves in having a diverse workforce, uh, equal opportunity employer. Uh, we want to ensure that we represent our local community, but we, we want to ensure that we're hiring the best, and we believe that Winston-Salem has that to offer, and that's proven through, uh, the employees that we have currently.
Maybe, Mayor members, maybe, and, uh, you can just give that to me, break it down so I can see you're talking about women, males, and I would like to have that. You don't have to give it to me for later on. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Adams, you had a question, or these gentlemen?
Yes. Uh, first of all, I want to say that in 1995, I got, I was hired there. Uh, I was in your first 38 employees that you hired. I was a fiber optic tester, and I trained other technicians to test the fiber, get it out of the clean room. Um, it was a wonderful environment. I was there when the first cable rolled off and we put it on the truck, and, uh, we took a picture with the CEO of Corning and everything. Um, I remember how big that facility was, a really nice facility. Uh, it was the first of my knowing what a campus environment was like. Uh, I'm wondering, when I left there, you had still not, uh, put other manufacturing equipment in those, some of those parts of the building. Uh, they were a work in progress. Uh, is that already filled with manufacturing equipment, and you're expanding the actual footprint, the building?
Yes, ma'am. It's pretty full, the south and the north building. I don't know if the north building was there. I think the south building at the time, and I've heard that you did work there, and appreciate your service at Corning. Uh, so right now, like I said, there's still a lot of moving parts and pieces. Uh, we do see new equipment coming in, rearranging layouts, trying to fully utilize the space we have. So, so where the equipment is a more confirmed, uh, expansion piece of our plan, that the footprint is still something that we're working on.
And one more thing that I would hope that the public, the general public, would understand, that you are Corning. It was CCor when you first came to the city for assistance. I've been to your facility in Hickory, and I've been to the one in Wilmington as well. And I also have been to the one in Cabarrus County right there on 601.
Yeah.
Okay? Um, the one thing that I do admire about your company is, when you were hiring, you didn't mind hiring people like me who maybe didn't have a technology, science background to be able to do the work. I'd say probably most of us that got hired at that time, even when we got ramped up to 100 and something employees, probably over 60% of us did not come out of that type of environment. But I, I thank you guys and admire you for giving people an opportunity that you actually took the time, you had an extensive training program that lasted for weeks and months, and there were tests and certifications, and I thank you for that, and I, I'm gonna, I feel as though I know you're still doing that to ensure that you have the best workforce. But I want the general public to understand that you don't have to have a biology degree or a chemistry degree or physics degree or math degree to work for your company, that you will train, do underdog training, and it's good. Thank you.
Councilmember McIntosh, had a question?
Yeah, you already answered a couple of my questions that Councilmember Adams posed, but I, I'm assuming this is, um, this expansion is occurring because demand has increased for your product. You guys are running pretty hard now and need to increase your capacity?
Yes, sir.
And, and where is the product that manufacturing this plant primarily used? Is it the kind of stuff that we see laid on the roadside here in Winston-Salem for, uh, that AT&amp;T and other companies have been doing?
Yes, sir.
Primary, North America.
Great. Okay, thank you.
We do ship around the world, but primarily, uh, North America.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for investment in our city, and we're just delighted for a potential expansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the council chamber who'd like to be heard on this proposed economic development assistance program? All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Um, this did not go to committee because of the time sensitivity of it, so since it's in the southeast ward, I'll take the liberty of recognizing the council member from that ward. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion and a comment, please. Uh, Mayor members of the council, I move for approval of this item.
Second.
Second. Go ahead, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, to the public, I just want you to know, as the council member of the area, I did have the opportunity to go out and meet with the executive staff of Corning and, uh, also Ms. Jill Atherton with the Chamber of Commerce. We had a really, really good discussion about the type of products that they create and also their commitment to hiring local. Uh, we talked a little bit about the possibility of, uh, doing a job fair, getting out the community, and making sure that we reach out to our, our friends, our relatives, our neighbors, and, uh, talk about the types of jobs that Corning will be offering and their commitment, again, to hiring local. I think this is a great example of the type of incentive packages that we support here in the city of Winston-Salem. Um, I, I think that the deal pays for itself, as you've heard. Uh, the tax dollars are protect, are protected with clawback provisions, and, uh, we'll create over a number of years 100 net new jobs. So these aren't jobs that are being transferred from other areas. These are new jobs that will come into our community. They'll buy houses, uh, they'll spend money in our stores, uh, so they'll definitely bolster our local economy. And again, speaking of the local economy, uh, the deal, the assistance is based on the net new property taxes and the net new sales taxes. So this is a win for everyone. I'm very excited about Corning and the products they create. It, it's kind of interesting what they do. They're a manufacturing company, uh, but they also work towards innovation. And with us being the city of arts innovation, uh, this is certainly the type of deals we need to be supporting. And Mayor members of the council, as I've already done, I'm happy to support this item, and I was glad to move for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just, uh, echo your comments. Uh, this was, project came here in 1995. And if you might recall, what was going on here in Winston-Salem in the late 80s, early 90s, we were in deep trouble. And so getting a CCor, uh, plant here was a great boost to our economy. I was doing economic development for the city at that point, so it gave us a good psychological boost as well as an economic boost. So we thank you for, very much for your investment. As was mentioned, it does clearly pay for itself. Uh, over the next five years, it will generate about $670,000 in new taxes to the city. We will return a portion of that, about 435 over the five years, which means we will net $235,000 immediately, then after five years, of course, we keep all of the taxes. So it's a good, solid economic development project, 100 new jobs paying $58,000 a year. So we appreciate this investment. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No? That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, we do have a need to go into a closed session tonight, and I would recognize Councilmember McIntosh for her motion.
I move that the city council go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-138.11A3 to, one, consult with and provide instructions to the city attorney in the matter of City of Winston-Salem versus Kay Neely Investments LLC, 15 CVS, 3149. And two, receive legal advice from the city attorney regarding UDO text amendment 272, amortization of nonconforming adult establishments in the CB district. And three, preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Sir, second.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No? That's unanimous. We'll go into closed session. Is there a motion to end the closed session?
I move.
To end the closed session?
I move that we end closed session.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Adams, second by Councilmember Taylor to end the closed session. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? That's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Montgomery, second by Councilmember Adams to adjourn.